All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 7th, 2024 Town of Gray Planning Board Meeting. I will call the meeting to order two minutes after seven. So first up is roll call. Melinda.
Present.
Chenya.
Present.
And I'm Dan Cobb, also present. Tamara is excused this evening, so it will be the three of us. Next up, minutes approval. So minutes of the February 8th meeting. Did anyone have any comments, corrections, edits to that?
I was not present, but I did read them.
Okay. Are they not your satisfaction? Okay.
You did a good job.
Well, I think I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Can I vote?
That's sure.
Oh, sure.
That's three, nothing. Okay. Information exchange. Kristin, do you have any information here? I see a couple things in the memo.
On the mic. Okay. So we had a joint workshop preceding this meeting between the Open Space Committee and the Planning Board, which was an opportunity to discuss the process for reviewing open space in subdivisions in the town. I think it was pretty fruitful. We got some good feedback for potential amendments to the ordinance and better understanding of what's in there now and going forward. So it was a good meeting. The zoning workshop, which was going to be a joint workshop with several committees, to my knowledge, has not yet been rescheduled. I don't know if Dan is with us virtually. Might be able to speak to that after.
Okay.
And we do have the final plan for the area states amendment to the Eagles Ridge subdivision in the rear. If you could please make a point of signing that before you head out. I think that is it for me.
Okay. Any information from the board? Anything from our liaison, Mr. McGuire? Who's online? Doesn't sound like he's got anything, so I'll keep, I'll keep moving. All right. Next up is new business. First up is Mayall Road, Gervais Subdivision Sketch Plan Review. This is a request by Andrew Gervais of Gervais Homes LLC, represented by Austin Fagan of BH2M Engineering. For Planning Board Sketch Plan Review of a Proposal to Create a 12-lot subdivision on his 60-plus-or-minus-acre property near 279 Mayall Road at Tax Map 21, Lot 26-20, in the Rural Residential and Agricultural and Business Development One zoning districts. This proposal is subject to major subdivision review. We have an applicant.
Good evening. My name is Walter Pelkey from BH2M. We represent Andy Jervis and his proposed 12-lot conventional subdivision located along Mayall Road here in Gray. Just a quick overview. Again, 12 lots. There's about 900 feet of interior road to service some of the lots. All the lots will be served by private septic, individual wells, underground power along the roadway, overhead along Mayall Road for the electric and communications. The board has seen this previously as a cluster subdivision. Andy and Austin took another look at this. They thought the property was better suited for a conventional subdivision. So that's what you have in front of you now. We also submitted a picture or a PDF of the entire build-out for future, for your use, but that's something to be visited later down the road. We've got staff's comments. We've looked at all of those. There's a few things that were points of discussion. We'd like to get our site walk scheduled and anything I can do tonight on those points of discussion, I'm happy to help.
Okay. Thank you. So yeah, so typically what I do is walk through the memo and would ask you with the staff comments if you agree with them all or you have ones that you want to discuss. So rather, if you agree with it, we don't need to cover it. If there's something you want to discuss with us, let us know which one and...
Item, Staff Comment 3, which speaks to the shape of Lot 1. A couple of things. It's a 200,000-square-foot lot. We've got an 80,000-square-foot minimum zone, and I understand 100% what the ordinance is asking for the 3:1 for the shape of that lot. And if the board doesn't accept that lot as is, we're happy to remove sort of that finger. But in reading the ordinance, it speaks to exceeding or an odd-shaped lot to meet the 80,000-square-foot lot requirement, minimum lot requirement. In reality, if I cut this lot back, say we conveyed this away, or the shape of that lot is just odd. We don't need that back portion for the 80,000 square feet. And we understand we exceed the 3:1. If the board doesn't like the looks of that, or I'm misinterpreting that, we're happy to make that change. Just something, if we could get your input tonight. If you leave it as is, we can make that change going forward.
Okay. I wouldn't mind, I guess, hearing staff input on that one now.
I think, as we had noted in the memo, it's not, not off by much. There's like 3.8:1 instead of 3:1. Again, I think this ordinance was written to avoid the real skinny ones or the ones that are, like you said, like trying to get enough lot to make it work, which is not necessarily the case here. It is oddly shaped by the nature of it. If you look at it kind of from the side, it's fairly standard. It's just kind of off to one side. So it's really your call. I don't see it being a huge impediment to the use or whatever. I mean, there's a lot of other elements we need to look at that are in the other staff comments about setbacks and how these building envelopes are going to work, but as far as the oddly shaped lot, I know we dealt with this on another project recently and felt that that worked as well. So it's really up to whether or not you think it causes an issue.
Okay. So from staff point of view, you were simply pointing out that it didn't meet the ordinance, not that you had...
Correct. Yep.
Okay. Yeah. Because, I don't know, my read on it is it's going to be an odd-shaped lot anyway, so I'm not sure I see a big deal with it. I don't know. We're probably, we're not into deliberations yet, but that's for what it's worth. We'll probably come back to that one.
Okay.
Any, what other staff comments did you want to cover?
We didn't see a whole lot. That was the one that jumped out at us.
Okay.
It didn't seem, and we understand the buffers in the front. Once we get a little further along, it, we, I can see us providing blow-ups of these building windows, of the ones that look a little tight. The scale at 150 feet to the inch, you throw a scale on these things and these building windows can be as large as 100 by 100, though they look a little funny at 150 scale. But we don't have any trouble providing that for staff. We don't have any trouble with the buffers in the front. Same thing with the shared driveways. It was something we looked at today with shared driveways and possibly easements where they're necessary. We kicked around the idea of bringing the, a shared driveway for five and six gets a little touchy with that wetland and the storm drain that crosses there. We're looking at now possibly an easement for access of Lot 5 across Lot 7 off of the proposed roadway and just limiting this to three curb cuts along Mayall. And that would be something else, too, that we would look for your acceptance of.
And what about, there's a suggestion on the build-out of the road and your phasing and...
Yes.
Where, where did you, or where would you land on that?
On the build-out of the road?
Yeah.
The intent is to build that to town standard.
Okay.
To that point.
To what town standard?
I think it's a minor road standard. I don't have it off the top of my head.
Okay.
I think the hope would be that maybe one day that road, if it meets the criteria of the town, to be accepted as a town road.
So that, that would not be us that...
Right.
You'd be requesting that from?
Yep.
Okay. Any initial questions from the board?
Just having been at the workshop about open space, I'm sad that you don't have a cluster in open space. So just expressing that, I would be curious about your openness because I am familiar with this parcel in the sense of having run past it many hundreds of times because I live near here. And it is all wooded and it's lovely now and it's across the street from the mill complex. That's a cool spot. I'm curious about, I mean, every single piece of this development is going to be a lot. It looks like that's the plan. So there's zero common space whatsoever.
Right.
And that's under the traditional.
Yep.
And I guess I would be curious about whether or not there's any willingness to consider any part of it being open just to potentially create connectivity in the future should any of the adjacent parcels be developed.
Yeah. I'd be happy to sit with the applicant and, and run that by him. It's a reasonable ask as, I mean, you're looking at this thing. There are some areas on here. We're trying to go with no wetland impacts on this. That being said, you can see there are some restricted areas that, that aren't wetlands. But of course, they're bisected by the wetlands. They could be reasonable open spaces, but I can run it by Andy.
Yeah. I think especially on the perimeter where maybe you're, the parcels adjacent to you might be interested in an open space development. And then you've got, you're gonna, you know, maybe it could be a place where, I don't know, a critter or two might live without having to be in someone's backyard per se.
Okay. But you're suggesting stick with a conventional layout.
Oh, I would love to do a cluster subdivision with big open space, but that I appreciate is, is, is not my call to make. But even despite the fact that it is a traditional subdivision, there's the potential for you to have some, some open areas that could be potentially connecting to other adjacent developments.
Okay.
Should that happen in the future. Mayall Road is not heavily, I mean, there's other, other woods around you, so to see them stay.
Anything else?
Oh.
I was just gonna say, there's nothing under this that any of these lots, they could clear the entire thing from further beyond. There would be no stopping it, right?
That's, I mean, that's why we're asking for building envelopes, so that we show the limits of clearing.
Oh, okay.
That's what he's saying. It's not provided in the future.
Gotcha. Okay. Yeah, the more of the woods we can save, the better.
Okay.
That'll be good for the developer and for each of these owners, too. I think that is a worthy goal.
All set? Okay. Chenya, anything?
I don't have anything either. I did want to just walk through with the board as far as assuming, I'll ask that you're in agreement with all the staff suggestions?
Yeah.
Nothing in conflict there?
Nothing.
Yeah. And then it sounds like you've pretty much aligned with staff on all of those suggestions for the most part.
Yep.
So I guess I will return back to the shape of the Lot 1. What's the board's take on that issue, not an issue?
I would like to see where the septic field will be because we can have nitrogen pollution and phosphorus pollution very easily. It will impact the wetland, which is there.
Oh, yeah.
It's pretty serious.
Yeah. How about the shape itself, though? Is that an issue to you if they...
It's odd.
So is it an issue specifically the shape, though, assuming they can cite building envelope and, and septic? Would that be an issue?
Yes.
So you would have an issue with the shape of the lot? Just trying to give...
Well, it's just, it just looks awkward, but I will have no issue.
No issue. Okay. I don't have an issue either. It might be, since you're coming back anyways, I think it might be useful next time if you just showed on the plan a dotted line where, like, if you did change the lot to comply with the ordinance, this is what it would look like. But I don't, it would just be a nice reference for us to have, but I don't think there's going to be any value in asking you to do that, from my opinion. So you're probably fine with the lot as it's shaped, but that would be good to have in your back pocket so we can see what it would look like when it's in compliance. And then anything additional on stormwater besides what has already been put out there by staff? Tamara here, that's her favorite topic.
I know. I know.
You'll get that next time. Okay. So I think, I mean, it looks pretty straightforward. Looks like you're ready to schedule a site walk starting when? As soon as possible or...
As soon as you folks are ready.
Okay. So it would be at least, what, 14 days out?
Yeah, we probably would potentially get the butter, a butter letter out tomorrow. We'll be pushing it. Maybe Monday.
We don't have to, I mean...
The, if we set it tonight, we can, yeah, we just have to do the abutter notice because this would be the public notice of the date and time.
So we'll have some more daylight starting, what, after this weekend, right?
Oh, is there a time change?
Sunday.
Sunday. Yeah. So that helps. So we're thinking the last week of the month? When, what's, what works for you, Kristin? Like, we don't have to push you to do it tomorrow. That's, like, that's not necessary, so...
The abutter notices go out pretty quickly anyway, but allow me like a week. But we want to give people like a week's heads up. So yeah, so setting it outside of two weeks is ideal. Where do we come up with? Thursday morning? So like if we did it late the week of the 18th?
Thursdays in general are very difficult.
We could get notices out now, like tomorrow.
I could, I could do the 21st or the 28th.
21st looks okay.
Uh, actually, false. Not the 21st.
Not the 21st, okay. How about the twen, Monday, the 25th?
That looks okay. This is always the hard part.
I know.
It is the hard part.
How about you?
Monday, the 25th work?
I'm looking.
Okay.
We had some success with Friday last time around. I don't know.
Uh, should, should be all right.
25?
Will work. 24th, 25th.
25th?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. It's okay. You're thinking like four or one?
So I have, I have some unknown scheduling for the entire month of March.
Hmm.
Because I'm doing my civic duty as a potential juror. I have no idea when that's going to happen.
Yeah, those are good times.
That's my only hesitancy with scheduling this is I'll have no idea until like the Friday before.
Yeah, I'm just going to go with something, I guess.
So it's either that or do it in April. So I don't know. I'd say we go for the 25th and...
4:30, 4:05?
Uh, probably a little later would be more likely. So like 5:00. That should give us enough time, enough light still, I think, right? It should have an hour or so. You do it in an hour?
Yeah. I mean, how much do you folks want to see as far as stakeout out there? Center line of the road, front lot corners?
Yeah, typically center line of the road, if there's any, anything unique about like the wetlands or the, you know, unusual terrain, steep terrain.
Okay.
Anything that might be a challenging building lot or something like that. You know, we're not looking to, to, you know, go all through the, every single lot or anything. It's more, we just, you know, kind of want to, we'll probably end up walking the center line of the road. And if you had one, if you had specific lots that you wanted to take us on for some reason?
Okay.
Do that.
Okay. It might be a good idea if we stake out those front building windows for three and four so we have a feel for what those are like in the field.
And the other thing that would be useful in addition to the, the new road center line is where the driveway on Mayall Road, if you'd flag those spots that you're thinking of, you're going to have curb cuts on Mayall.
Yep. Yep.
If there's an existing, maybe it was a logging road or something up that parcel, is the new road going to be anywhere near that? I'm just thinking for purposes of how it's...
I do not know where that is.
I can picture it, but...
All right. 5:00 PM on the 25th. We'll see you there.
All right. Thank you.
Do you have that little plug-in thing that goes into the computer or...
Oh, yeah.
Unless, I mean, all I have is just the plug.
Yeah, unless you want to plug it in. Does that plug?
Okay. I'll get us started while they're working at the podium. So next up is Lewiston Road Liberty Subdivision. Subdivision and Site Plan Amendments. This is a request by Scott Liberty, DBA, Grayland Holdings LLC, represented by JP Conley of DM Roma Consulting Engineers, for amendments to the Lewiston Road Subdivision Plan, Plan Book 222, Page 249, and Site Plan regarding the access easement for lots 2 and 3, map 28, lots 26-02-01 and 26-02-00 at one storage way and two storage way respectively, and the abutter easement and impervious calculation on Lot 3. This property is located in a commercial zoning district and the application is subject to Site Plan and Subdivision Amendment Review. All right. We have an applicant. Before we get started, there's a lot of history behind this project. It's been in a number of forums and it's been contentious at times. There's, we're not going there. That's what I'm telling everyone in the room, okay? We're going to stay focused on the application that's at hand, and we're going to speak to what's directly relevant to the application. So history is history. Things that happen in other forums happen in other forums, and we're going to efficiently move through this application. So...
Sure.
Take it away.
Okay. I'll just be brief then as far as just explaining, explaining what we're here to talk about as far as the changes to the plan. So this is an amended application which has a few additional items on it that I'll just kind of go through with you here. So the, the previous plans did not show a 60-foot-wide easement that, I can hover over it in this area. So there's an existing easement in this location that provides access utilities, capabilities to this property. So we've added that to the plans. We've also added some language in Note Number 13, which speaks to some allowable impervious area in that plan. We're trying to kind of just build that into this approval so that if the, the hordes of the backland wish to utilize that easement for access and build something in there, that we've kind of laid out an allowance for impervious area that would still keep the overall lot number three in compliance with the 65% maximum impervious coverage. So we've built that into the notes on Note Number 13. We also have a small area here that we're requesting approval on to just add some additional, um, impervious area that's also built into that sixty-five percent and that just provides, um, potential room for some additional parking that could be utilized for this building here in the future. So. Believe, um, the only other item that I think is different on this plan from what was approved, we've got a shortening of the thirty-three foot wide access easement that comes into the property. Originally, it went deeper into the property, but, um, come to find out, it didn't need to go that far back, so the deeds that actually conveyed the property had it shorter, so we're showing the length of the easement that's actually reflecting what was conveyed on the deeds, um, just so we can correct that item and everything is consistent. So, um, those are the proposed changes to the plans here, um, if there's anything else that, um, you wanna add, um, to the discussion, happy to talk about it here tonight, um, but that's, that's what we have for proposed changes.
Okay, thank you, so, um, there's a number of staff comments, um, if you had a chance to read through those, as far as, I know there's, there's been discussions that I've seen emails on, you know, putting things in deeds and relative to that, are you, that landed that you're good to do that?
Correct.
Okay. So, um, is there anything in the staff comments that you're not on board with, or is that, that's all been resolved?
It's been discussed at length and yeah, we're, we're satisfied, uh, we're agreeable to comply with everything in this document.
Okay. Um. So let's, it's probably worth talking about the impervious coverage calculation a little bit. So you've come up, that one I think is worth a brief history of the change and how you came up with what's new and why you're confident in the new one?
Yep.
Without, you know.
Yeah, so just a, just a brief explanation kinda going back, so there was originally some layout of impervious area on the site that the board had approved. There was some reclaimed asphalt that was laid around that existing building on lot three, so it's not as like clean up and edges, you know, normal pavement. When that was done, um, there were some questions about the amount of coverage, so we had gone out and, um, just done some approximate measurements, just pulling tape measures off the building and trying to get a, an estimate of what that area was, so that was our initial calculation. But since then, we've gone out and actually surveyed the, the limits of what was installed out there for the impervious coverage for that reclaimed service as well as the paved services on the site, so it's been surveyed now and, um, accurately reflected on the plans.
So you're as confident as you can be that this current one is the correct one?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, we may come back to that one, but, uh, let's see. Any initial questions from the board?
Not right now.
Not right now, okay, that's fine, okay, all right, um, so I think what I'll do now, um, we have gotten, um, couple, wow, if, we've gotten input from a couple of butters. I'm gonna address the easy one first, which is the one that came in, uh, this afternoon. So, um, Lynn Gallagher had sent a, uh, note into us and to Kristen, um, regarding some potential compliance issues with the site around, um, the signage and the access points. So I did wanna acknowledge that we received that and, um, to my thinking, that should be directed to staff and code for follow-up, but I'm happy to hear any info that you have, that you wanted to share, if any, on that one.
Yeah, if you, if you wanted to address any of those, I, uh, our first question was related to the signs on the site. The initial subdivision plan, it did show, there used to be a, like island in between of the shared accessway where the sign was shown, the up, this updated plan shows it where it is now, which is in a slightly different location. That was issued through the permitting process with codes, um, we typically do not reflect, um, signs on the face of a, of a subdivision plan, that one was there because it was existing at the time. But this one did go through the code process to get properly permitted, um, to where it is now. Same thing with the, if there's the, the token cannabis sign on lot three, went through the codes process. But typically how that is handled, that they're approved via the C E O rather than through the subdivision, face of the subdivision plan process. But with the initial one, I think there was maybe some, um, just it wasn't, was a reference because it's not the typical process. And again, it was only reflected because it was there at the time. So both of those are permitted through codes, they're, they're permitted signs under the sign ordinance. And the new location of the existing sign for storage is reflected on the new plan, that's before you tonight. If you wanted the token cannabis sign reflected on this plan, that would be a question for you as a board to raise to discuss. But again, typically, they're, they go through codes.
Right, so, yeah, I, my intent was to acknowledge this because we received it and she, you know, definitely put her thought into it. But this application for what they're doing, you know, doesn't open it up for everything, so. It's, to me, um, it's not, we don't need to tie up tonight with this.
Going into that, yeah, so just that's, that's where that stands, they're both approved and then, uh, we'll review, uh, her concern about an additional area that appears cleared, um, go check on that with codes, like, so we'll follow up with staff. And as far as retail, we don't allow retail cannabis in the, the town, so we'll be following up with, with that if there are concerns from the abouter related to that.
Okay, so, uh, uh, that's what I would like to do, if it turns out that through your investigation there's either a compliance issue or another amendment needed, you can do that separately, but I don't wanna, I wanna get tonight done, so. Unless the board feels strongly. Okay, so that's what we'll do there. All right, um, we also have a couple letters that we got in from, uh, Mr. Nagel, hope I got that right, who's an attorney representing the butters, um, and, uh, they had some requested changes to, um, what we potentially approve tonight, so I will, hang, hang on. No.
Chris Nagel, I just wanna let you know before you ask him about it, I was wrong about the seventy-five foot setback.
I was, I'll, I'll let you come to the podium, so you can, yep, that's what I was just getting to, okay. Well, you had a couple other requests, so.
You're right.
I'm still gonna let you go to the podium.
Okay.
And that's what I'm about to do. Yep, so, um, the cat's out of the bag, um, this, I'm gonna open this up to public comment, uh, the butters have had some challenges with this and I wanna make sure to the extent, um, that we can, we make this, um, the best for them as well, they did have three, it sounds like now two potential requests that they'd like to see woven into this, so, um, with that introduction, please step to the podium.
You formally opening the public hearing?
I am formally opening, sorry, I didn't state that, so I am opening it to the public, so it's not only Mr. Nagel, but anyone else that chooses to come up afterward.
Thank you, um, I'm Chris Nagel, um, I live four and a half miles down the road in West Cumberland. I was on the planning board in Cumberland for twelve years and I used to hate it when the lawyers showed up. So, um, I apologize for my error on the seventy-five foot setback, I now understand, thanks to Wayne Wood, my client surveyed that that's a natural resource protection act building setback. And so for that, I do apologize to the applicant and the town. Now, these notes, uh, this, this new language, well, let's talk about the Z B A variance language that they have added to this thing above the planning board's signature line, I blew it up and it's my exhibit seven, if that helps people.
What would help is which note you're referring to.
Oh, so one says if you, well, it's my exhibit seven, if you have my memo. And if you don't have my memo, it's the one on the plan right above your signature. Which is number what?
It's not Hubbard. It's Z B A variance granted.
Gotcha, okay.
Are we all there?
We are all there, thank you.
So that's just a copy of the plan that they've submitted, February twenty-ninth. I have no problem with the first sentence here because it's a true statement. The problem is it's a little misleading in that it doesn't clearly state that that variance is for the benefit of the Chapman Rand property and not the owner of this property. Someone reading this without knowing anything would say, oh, look, they can get another six point two percent. So, people don't often go read the actual document itself? So all we asked them to do, and they refused, was to add a note that says this variance is for the benefit of the adjacent land of Chapman Rand, it's right there in my first memo. Uh, and I, that's what we're gonna request that you make a condition of approval if you get this far, I understand my clients have no problem with Mr. Liberty's project other than the way he seems to wanna control our easement. And I'm really glad you said you didn't wanna talk about history, because I don't either. So, we think that note needs to be changed. The second sentence.
So, hang on, I'll just, so it's for the benefit of, that's the gist of what you're after?
Yeah, I think in my first memo, I, something to the effect of for the benefit of the adjacent land as it's labeled on the plan. There's my first memo, hold on.
It's already here.
Application. And as something like this variance is for the benefit of the adjacent land shown as N F. William Chapman Land, southeast of the sixty-foot wide access and utility easement. Either that, I know plans are art, the engineer could just make a reference to this note right in the image of the sixty-foot easement. But I just wanna make it clear for the casual observer that this easement is not for the owner of this lot, it's for someone else's benefit.
So, you, you would like it to be specific to the variance that was granted to your client?
Just indicate that it was.
Yep, okay, got it.
Now, the second sentence purports to be a, just a simple statement from your code, but that's really not what your code says. Your code says a right of appeal secured by a vote of the board shall expire. I don't know what a right of appeal is, to be honest with you, I don't know what was intended by that. But I don't see the need to put a statement from your ordinance in a note. I don't see how it is relevant to Mr. Liberty's desire to get his plan up to sp-. So I just re-recommend that we remove it, or at least quote it accurately and let someone else figure out what a right of appeal is. So that's, that's the problem with that note. The problem with note thirteen primarily is the first sentence is false. If you look at the variance that was granted in this town last year, it's exhibit six in my package, I think, hold on. Yeah, exhibit six. Nope, six is zoning. Sorry, I don't know my own town, oh, here we go, it's exhibit four. My bad. Living old is no fun. If you look at my memo, exhibit four is a copy of the recorded portion of the variant from the registry of deeds. And it says quite clearly, we can expand, um, up to six point two percent, which is not twenty-six hundred square feet. Nothing in the variance says it's limited to twenty-six hundred square feet. Mr. Liberty is attempting to change, or have you make a note that's inconsistent with what the zoning board did. It really makes no sense. And it just then, and then it says you gotta have a driveway permit to build a driveway. That's interesting, we have a driveway permit. Why does he have this note on his plan? And he says we gotta meet the conditions in the variance. Well, variance is quoted in his plan, it has nothing to do with. I mean, I guess I understand that particular note a little bit, because it does mean these conditions are meant to protect Mr. Liberty's property. But they're already somewhere else, if you want to put them here, but the way it's written, it just, it seems odd. So I guess, um, if he wants to have a note like this highlighting the variance, he might put some of the stuff in the little separate note somewhere in note thirteen and write it so it's accurate. That's all.
Okay.
That's all.
Got it.
And I hope if he, another plan gets proposed, he'll give us the right to look at it and receive, so that, those are the things we think are important to my client. And thank you for your time.
All right, thank, thank you for your input.
You're happy.
Uh, is there anyone else from the public that wishes to speak on this, since I opened it to public comment? Come on, it's like aggressively shaking the head, no. Um, okay, I'll close the public comment then. So we're done with that and I will invite the applicant if you wish to respond to, um, either, or, either or both of those requested changes.
Sure. So our reference to the twenty-six hundred square feet was really just intended to state that, you know, what the project outside of that easement is proposing is that we would basically leave twenty-six hundred square feet, we, we would not build anything beyond, you know, leaving that twenty-six hundred square feet in order to be in compliance with the sixty-five percent coverage. Um, you know, to the extent that they, you know, get Z B A approvals and they could exceed beyond that, then, um, that has no, no bearing on this and we're fine with that. So if there's a different way to craft that note that just basically says that, you know, we're, um, we're leaving twenty-six hundred square feet below the sixty-five percent that they're entitled to basically as a set aside and, and plus whatever additional that they can get through the Z B A process or have received through the Z B A process, they can kind of sort that out through the driveway entrance permit side, so if there's a different way to craft that note, then we're fine with that, I guess just, for the record, we're intending to earmark that twenty-six hundred square feet for them and not utilize it to the point that we get to that sixty-five percent and not leave it, so.
Okay.
And yeah, I have no issue with adding language to the Z B A variants just to reference and I, I guess it would be just be a point of, I don't know if the, if Z B A approvals tend to, you know, run with the land or run with the applicant, so depending on how the town administers that, we could reference the parcel or who applied for the permit, depending on which entity the Z B A approvals run with. Whichever one it is, we'll reference either the applicant or the parcel.
Okay. So, I've had some, thank you, hang on. Gotcha, not now though. I've, um, had some conversations with Kristen throughout the week, trying to kind of sort out the situation and my read is that you, it sounds like you were attempting to convey some additional flexibility. They're concerned that it either didn't give it to them or potentially constrain them, so they're not comfortable with the language, so. I worked with Kristen and Kristen worked with Ben and I'm sorry, I didn't get your last name. I worked with Kristen and Kristen worked with Ben, and I'm sorry, I didn't get your last name when.
McCollum.
McCollum, so they worked on actually language for both of those items, which from the town's perspective and my perspective, I think, gets everyone what they want. So I guess I'll just read them. So the first one, I'll go in the order that Mr. Nagel talked about them. So just so I'm clear, what's on the plan now? You're, you're proposing that that entire thing would be removed and would be replaced with what I'm gonna read, correct?
No.
Speaking to the ZBA?
Nope.
I want to make sure I get it right.
So the language that's on the face of the plan within the easement area would remain, as Mr. Nagel was stating? You could, you could choose to reference that on the face of the plan in the note.
I'm referring to the ZBA variance granted part. Yeah, okay.
So he was saying that he wants it to reflect that it's granted for the benefit of Chapman Rand, the abutters. Which you could, that's not part of the additional draft motions I provided to you. But if you were to choose to do that, you could do that either with language that, that we do now, or you could do it by reference to what's on the face of the plan and the.
So it's stated, and my read on this is it's, it doesn't use the language for the benefit of, but it's stated in a way that it's specific to that variance.
It does say benefiting and it references the CCRD number, the easement has been filed with the registry deeds.
Benefits the, right, so it benefits the specific variance. And if someone looked it up, it's a variance for them.
No. I think we're talking about two different things. It references the easement, that the easement is very clearly for the benefit of Chapman Rand. I think what he was asking was that the 2,600 square feet is very clearly for the benefit of Chapman Rand.
Oh, wait, I think, not sure.
So.
Are you talking about this one, right?
I'm talking about number nine.
Yeah.
I went in the order that Mr. Nagel presented them, which so he didn't.
Okay, for the first sentence, so the 6.2 of additional impervious. The change in number nine in the draft motions that are provided to you tonight is with reference to, that the 6.2% is, is with reference to a 20-foot wide driveway. That's the change that's proposed there.
Mm-hmm.
So it's not, that's not related to what we're talking about.
Okay, so.
Number nine is not related to what you're asking.
Okay, it references the ZBA variance granted language.
I can point out to the extent that it.
Okay.
I don't have any.
Please do.
I don't have any objection with Attorney Nagel's suggested language in his, this is your February 27th, 2024, number one, for the benefit of the adjacent land shown as now or formerly William Chapman Gregory Rand southeast of the 60-foot axis and utility easement. As a practical matter, the variance runs with the land, not with the, with the individuals, but that's what the now or formerly references. So if the, if the applicant's willing to accept that, I think that, and that's obviously what's being proposed.
Okay.
The abutters, I don't have any legal qualms with that.
Okay, and so we're all clear that that is in reference to the ZBA variance granted language?
Yep.
It's not a, it's not a note number, it's its own separate item, okay. Are you okay with that revision to that section of the plan phase?
Yeah, yeah, we have an objection to making that change.
Okay.
As far as the second sentence in there, I don't, I mean, if you want to strike it, that, I think that was the request that Mr. Nagel had made, I mean, I don't have a. It's basically just stating how, you know, sunset clauses for ZBA approvals in the town of Gray, it's just stating.
Okay.
The procedure, so I have no problem just deleting that.
I assume you have no problem with something being deleted?
I don't have any problem with that being deleted. I can, I can point out for the record that that's staff and, and the town attorney's interpretation of what that sentence means. It does say rights of appeal, which is perhaps not the best language to be used, but that's for another day. Having that, having that sentence in there one way or the other doesn't affect whether or not the variance would, would expire or wouldn't expire. So if the, if the abutters would prefer that sentence not to be in there, I don't have any problem with that either.
Okay. Board input?
Okay. Tried to make some notes here.
Well, I don't, yeah, I don't, well, I don't think you have to, probably, you don't have to go to the specifics yet.
Well, I want, I have a question, I guess.
Okay, okay.
So I think that what we're discussing here, we have a proposal inside of our memo that just came to us right before we met. And I think what Mr. Nagel is asking for is that the ZBA variance granted section on the plan includes inside of it for the benefit of the land now or formerly of Chapman Rand. That's the key thing that you're looking for.
Yep.
And that's not currently here, but we could add it.
That, that's relevant, this number nine is, that's separate.
To this one. It's totally separate.
That's not this.
Not this?
I, I set us off on, as hard as I tried to not make any mistakes, I made one.
Okay, all right.
So that's not relevant.
Never mind, okay.
Sorry, that was my fault, so.
Okay. Withdrawn.
Thank you. So we're talking specifically about this section right here.
Okay.
And.
And this is the language that.
That's now, that, that's a different, it's a separate element.
It's a separate element. So there, there are multiple potential amendments to that ZBA variance, now the one that we're talking about right now would be for benefit of the abutters' language, adding that language.
So.
Okay.
So the proposal that Mr. Nagel made was to add for the benefit of.
Okay.
And to delete the second sentence.
Okay.
The town representative, town attorney agreed that the town is okay with it.
Okay.
The applicant's okay with it. So now I'm at the board to make sure both of you are okay with it.
Totally fine with it, if the lawyer is fine with it, yes.
That's the answer I was looking for.
Absolutely fine with it.
All right, so, and I am also fine with that, so that, consider that piece done. It'll need to be revised in that way, so one off the table. Next is note 13. Okay, so we have a proposed new language for note 13, which, which is number eight in our additional items.
Now, if you want us to speak to that.
Oh, go ahead, sure.
The goal, the goal here with, with number eight is to clarify that regardless of whether or not the abutters use their variance that like Dustin was referring to, there would be the 2,600 square feet of impervious set aside in this easement area. So should they ever want to utilize that amount of impervious within that easement area, it would be locked into use there. So the applicant is confirming that they would not max out 65% outside of the easement area, which would therefore lock in an allotment for them to do something wider than what they're doing now with the variance. Because the variance is good for a limited period of time, this is kind of insurance going forward that, that Mr. Liberty is agreeing to not do the max of the 65%. So if they wanted to come back in five, 10 years and do something else with their property that requires something larger than a driveway, they would have the impervious and not have to ask you for a waiver or look for a ZBA variance or go through any. But that's, that's the goal of this language.
Okay. So to recap, this is my take on it, is that the applicant attempted to convey some flexibility and they laid this 2,600-feet item on top of an existing ZBA variance that the abutters had already gotten. So the abutters' concern is that it conflates the two issues, potentially constrains them. They didn't like that language, so this language, I believe, solves that problem because it separates the two. And it says that the 2,600 would only come into effect if the time, time-bound variance expires. So I'm gonna read that and I can give you a copy of it to read if you'd like.
Could, could we get the copy before you read it?
I'm gonna read.
It's really a lot easier.
Well, I'm still gonna read it.
Is your reading staff on hold?
No, go ahead.
Yes, before we.
Well, this is.
This is hard, honestly, it's important if you're reading stuff and I.
I'm not expect.
You can have my copy.
All right, I'm gonna read it regardless, so we'll get him a copy to read as well. So this is the.
Sorry about that.
This is the proposed, this is the proposed revision to note 13. The first, the first sentence of note 13 on the face of the amended subdivision plan shall be amended to read, and this is what the proposal is. In the event that the below referenced variance expires pursuant to section 402 dot 9 dot 2 dot C dot 14 of the Gray zoning ordinance, additional impervious area on lot number three within the easement area may not exceed 2,600 square feet. So the intent is this 2,600 square feet doesn't come into play during the term of their variance. They can do whatever they want to do that's in compliance with that variance. And if it expires, there's this new thing that says it can't exceed 2,600 feet. So it's completely separated their in-force variance from anything. But it allows some clarity on what might happen in the future if it expires. Did I get that right?
That's the intent. The, the note, I agree with Attorney Nagel completely that a note on a subdivision plan like this can't override a variance that was granted by the zoning board of appeals. And that's not the intent, the intent, I think, as you just summarized, is the variance has a lifespan to it under your zoning ordinance. And of course, because the driveway permit that is at the heart of all of this has already been granted, there's a set period of time for that construction to happen. And assuming that it does, then this is effectively moot. But in the unlikely scenario, maybe more than, maybe it's more likely, I don't know. In the scenario that construction does not occur and the town determines that the variance out of the terms of your zoning ordinance has expired, the applicant would always, or, or the easement holders would always have the option of going back and asking for an additional variance from the ZBA. Or this note is just pointing out that if approved as shown, there will be 2,600 square feet of impervious surface left before that 20, that 65% mark is hit. And so that is effectively being allocated to that easement area if it's ever needed. I don't think the.
And only if it's needed.
And only if it's needed. As of right now, the terms of the variance control as long as that variance remains in, in effect. So that's the intent.
How do you feel about that revision, are you?
Yeah, yeah, if, if that works for everybody, then I'm fine with that.
Okay. Would you like to speak? I'll invite you back up because.
Thank you.
We're trying to help you out here and make this as right as we can.
A few points. Just to make sure I understand it. I, note 13. I'm just curious how often you put notes on plans that say if the developer doesn't build this, this, you know, it's just an odd thing. They got the permit, they're building the driveway in the next month or two. I think we're wasting a lot of time about something that doesn't matter. Our variance was issued with the understanding that Mr. Liberty's project was already maxed out. Turns out we didn't need a variance.
I understand.
Okay. So the first sentence in number 13 is just a false statement for two reasons.
Which, number 13 or?
This thing that says additional impervious area must not exceed 2,600 fierce feet, I mean, square feet.
Hang on, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Note 13 on the plan or the proposed new note 13, which one are you referring to?
That, it's the same, no, it's, it's on the plan, that's the new note 13.
No.
No, the one that I just read and we just handed to you.
So you're not gonna include that language?
We're looking to completely remove note 13 on the plan and replace it with the one that.
Well, just the first sentence, not completely.
Oh, sorry. Yep.
Replace the first sentence of 13.
Sorry, this is in one-point font, so I can't, so I can't read it.
Okay, no, let's talk about. Okay, well, what about the second sentence that says you must get a driveway permit? Because we have a driveway permit. Why is there a note on the plan that says you have to get a driveway permit when in fact we have a driveway permit?
Because as a practical matter, that driveway permit could expire if work isn't done in a, in the amount of time. I, I think it, it's adding information.
Well, no, then it says it must be issued. It's been issued, and you have a separate note that says what happens if it expires. So what's the point of this note?
The point is to allow for future development. The whole point here was to, you, you have currently a permit, driveway permit for an 18-foot wide driveway per your variance.
20-foot wide driveway.
The permit was issued for 18, you have a variance for 20, understood. But you have a driveway permit right now.
Excuse me, I want to contest that statement. The first page of the driveway application described 18 feet. We amended the driveway application by filing a plan showing a 20-foot wide driveway. The driveway permit says it's subject to the conditions of the ZBA variance, which includes a 20-foot wide driveway. So I respectfully disagree when you say the driveway permit is for an 18-foot wide driveway and we got a variance to make it 20. That's not what happened.
That's a piece you can discuss with codes, but my point here is that you have a driveway.
No, the point is this sentence says you have to get a driveway permit.
I'm getting really close to calling timeout here because it's not.
I'm just trying to understand why the town and Mr. Liberty need to explain the law.
So we're not, we're not going to litigate what happened at the ZBA here. You have a ZBA variance and it exists, and we're not gonna litigate what it does or doesn't say or mean.
Well, then, that's not, I'm not talking about the variance at all right now, talking about a statement that says you need a driveway permit to build a driveway. I don't think it's appropriate, I don't mind it, but I think it's strange. I do, and then the next sentence says you gotta comply with state and federal permits. Why is that a separate note? It suggests that someone's not gonna follow this, that is the statement of the law. And worse, the, the quoted ABC is just not the same words as in the variance. They've rewritten the variance subtly, but they've rewritten it. So I don't think.
Say that again?
We object to this note because it's inaccurate and has two statements of the law in general. So the, the. So we've got a variance, even if they're maxed out, to build up to 16.22% for this 20-foot wide driveway and whatever else needs to be built. This 2,600 feet is not relevant, so. We just, I would like to be able to see an accurate note 13. I haven't, or at least have one written down before you vote tonight. Because this one is not accurate.
And which, which.
You can eliminate the problem.
I don't know which this one you're pointing to.
This note 13, the ABC. Why doesn't it just say see the conditions in the variance?
What is the ABC that you're?
Well, I'm looking at note 13 on the plan.
One-point font, which we need a microscope to see.
I've got the full size if you want to.
It's my exhibit seven.
We don't need to talk about note 13 because we're talking about a revised note 13.
Well, you've revised the first sentence, but you haven't revised the other sentences in your town staff note.
Where is the bigger one?
Right here.
Thank you.
Can't speak to that if you don't.
I can actually read it.
So I'd like to talk about each sentence separately. The first sentence is not accurate, and you apparently eliminated it. But the second sentence. But, the second sentence. I've never seen a plan that said you need to get a permit to build the driveway when someone has one.
Okay, and you have one, so we're good. What's the next one?
Can we get rid of it?
Maybe. I don't see a problem, but we'll talk about it.
The third sentence.
It says you need one, you have one, why are you about it?
You need to comply with state and federal permits. That's just true of every project you've ever approved, and how many times do you make a separate note about it?
Okay, thank you. What's next?
A, B, and C are not the same words used in the variance.
Okay, I'm not-
They're similar, but they're different.
Okay.
My suggestion, refer to the conditions in the variance.
Okay.
I think that's pretty straightforward, I hope. Mr. Liberty has been taking liberties with his notes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Have anything to add?
No. I think the board has heard the positions of the abutters. I think I would add that I don't find any, I'm subject to the proposed amendment to the first sentence. I don't see anything objectionable in Note 13 with it remaining there. But also, on the other hand, I also don't see any, I don't have any objection with some or all of it being strictly. So, I think that is generally up to the board as to how they'd like to proceed.
So, the thing I'm, I could go either way on the first ones. Basically restating things that have happened. The one I'm particularly interested in is where Mr. Nagel mentioned that the wording does not match. So-
I think it's a correct, I mean, it's a correct statement.
So, the last thing I want to do here is create more confusion. I want to do this in a way that creates less confusion. So, if wording doesn't match or whatever, we need to change that and simplify it.
I think on the fly, my suggestion, if the board wanted to do that, would be assuming you are keeping what precedes it, that after any necessary state/federal permits on that last sentence, you could remove A, B, and C and simply add, and then simply finish that sentence, and all conditions within the certificate of zoning variance approval, and I think probably just adding the recording information, or you could make reference to the ZBA variance granted note that is below it. But I agree that that's the most straightforward way to do that, is to make sure it's referencing one document and one document only.
Right, so that's what I would like to do. Okay, do you have any issues? Do you understand what we're talking about?
That's the same way I marked it up on mine, so it makes sense to me.
Okay. So, I think everyone's happy. Is everyone happy?
Very.
Great. Now, the tricky part is getting it all right. So, we've agreed in concept, and we need to get it right. Because we're not gonna revisit this again. So, I really try and avoid on-the-fly changes, and this is not really the one to do on-the-fly. But I want to get it done tonight, too, so. What's the simplest way to get this language right and written down?
Yeah, make him write it down.
My handwriting is probably the worst of all of us.
Oh, try and do your best.
All right, let's, we'll give him some time to do that. Let's see what else we need to look at, if anything, here.
Mr. Chair, once he finishes that, then when I, if I make a proposed motion, then I would just, I'm gonna just read what he writes.
Well, we need to incorporate it.
Okay.
Yeah. Because there'll be some other things, too.
Okay, keep trucking.
So, there's two things we'll need to get right. We need to get right the this language here. What we're doing with the ZBA variance granted section, and then the changes to 13. That's why he was referencing A, B, and C, and it's not there. It was in the other one. That's why I didn't follow that. Okay. Okay, there's a few other things that we can cover with the applicant. So, he had the amended access easements between the lots. He had the 900 square feet of the small parking area. Any issues with either of those items? Like, the big thing here is the everything related to the abouter and the easement. That's like the critical thing, but they did make a couple other changes, so. Jenga, any issue with those two? Or questions? You're running out of time. Okay, impervious calculation, let's- We can get back to that one. So, I think normally, I probably would have asked for a peer review on this since it was done and then it was changed. My feeling is that it was looked at in a more thorough manner. They came up with a number. The number works for the abutters, so it's good enough. That's where I'm at on that one. But happy to hear what the rest of the board says.
I agree on that.
I don't see any reason to dredge it up any further. Because if we do a peer review, they might not like what they get, so everyone's happy. Let's go with it. So then, I guess Kristin, I'm not sure now what you're referring to for your point number four. Any comment on the easement as shown on Lot 3? Is there anything different than what we've already talked about? Were you talking about something specific?
No, I was just running down the list of comments based on the changes to the plan.
Okay, so nothing, that wasn't a separate topic?
Oh, it's one of the three changes made in the plan.
Yeah, yeah.
Four changes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, moving towards the motion. Anything else that you guys think we need to cover here? He would like to, I was gonna offer one more time.
Well, thankfully, I don't want to go on this. First of all, as I understand it, what the developer is saying tonight is that our, my client has 2,600 square feet available to use of impervious surface, period. Is that correct?
No.
No, that just gets 65%. So, we're stopping short of a full 65% build-out by leaving 2,600 available with the easement.
Right, and that's permanent as far as you're concerned.
Yes, yes.
So, I guess my, the language says we have that 2,600 feet only if our easement-
If it expires.
Which isn't what he intended nor what I've heard him say. I think what I heard him say is, we have, this plan commits 2,600 square feet of impervious service to the 60-foot-wide easement.
Yeah.
Period. That.
So-
And whether we need it or not is another question for another day.
Right, and we're trying to help you out by separating it from the variance, which is why it's in two parts.
Here, it says we have it if the variance expires, but nowhere else does it say that 2,600 square feet-
So, the reason it was written that way was because the position that you were taking, as I understood it, was that you didn't want that to limit you anyway while your variance was in effect. So, we specifically tried to accommodate that by making it not applicable until and unless your variance was not in effect.
I respect that, and I agree with what you did based on your, but it turns out that's, it's different. He's saying, "We're gonna commit 2,600 square feet of impervious area to the 60-foot-wide easement, period, whether the variance permit expires or not." That's what they're saying, and that's not what this note says.
So, what this note says already gets you more than what you had.
But he's, he's offering us something tonight, which I think is a good gesture. I just want to make sure it's reflected in the approval and not something that's only available if our easement expires, which it's not, I mean, our variance expires, which it isn't gonna expire.
Okay, that, so this is where everyone started, trying to do this, and now we're back.
So, why can't we just say 2,600 square feet is dedicated to the access easement, period?
Okay, we might, we might do that.
Thank you. That's all I ask.
We may or may not. What are your thoughts on this?
I don't want to overcomplicate matters more than they perhaps already are. The variance that was granted by the ZBA was for an additional 6.2%
Correct.
impervious surface above and beyond, and it's based on-
Oh, my God.
So, the 6.2% is above and beyond, well, it's 6.2% of the lot area of Lot 3. The total lot area hasn't changed, I understand, I believe, from original plan to the revision. So, the 6.2%, I'm not great at math, but in my, I believe I did this math yesterday, and 6.2% of the lot area is more than 2,600 square feet. So, the variance that was granted to the easement holders entitles them to put more than 2,600 square feet of impervious surface on this lot to cover the easement area consistent with the driveway permit that they've already been granted. So, that's the state of affairs as it is today. So, if everything stays exactly as it is as of right now, that easement area can be improved with more than 2,600 square feet of additional impervious surface, because they have a variance that allows them to do that. In the event that that variance expires, they say that it won't. That's always best intentions. We know from COVID and everything that things can happen. If that variance expires and it's not, it's not, well, it can't be renewed. If it's, if a new variance is not received from the ZBA, then that lot remains, that lot can only be improved with up to 65% of its total area covered by impervious surface. And based on what is on this amended plan, if you approve the impervious surface calculations as they're shown on this version, there will be 2,600 square feet of area left over before Lot 3 reaches 65%. So, to recap all of that, the easement holders can improve their easement today under their variance with far more than 2,600 square feet of surface. If that variance expires, what this, what this plan would show town staff and the public and the planning board is that unless impervious surface was further reduced from what's being proposed, that there would only be 2,600 square feet left over to improve that driveway.
So, here's where-
Did I help or hinder that?
So, here's where- Last chance.
Ben, I agree with what you said. The reason I think it's important that it be clear that this 2,600 square foot has been dedicated to the 60-foot-wide easement is that that will prevent the developer from seeking to put more impervious surface on its lot in the event we, the variance doesn't expire. The way it's written now, you say we get it if it expires. They're saying we have it permanently. So, I don't think you need to make it that complicated. If the note says 2,600 square feet is dedicated to the 60-foot-wide easement, as I've asked, that will prevent the applicant from seeking more down the road. And that's part of this approval. That's what he's offering, so I just, I'm a simple guy. Thank you.
So, I guess stay up there for a second. Thank you. So, I appreciate that line of reasoning, and here's my question for you because where this, that was where they attempted to start, and they didn't do it in a way that worked for you. So, we're back to, if we take this approach, we're back to a conveyance of some certain square feet, 2,600, being on the plan, and that's also laying on top of your variance that is now in effect. Which was, that was one of your concerns that you stated, or my, that was my, let me, that was my takeaway, so.
I don't think, I'm not sure it lies on top of or next to.
Well, that's my-
But that's a subtle thing we don't need to debate.
Right.
I'll accept the town's position that no matter what the 6.2% is, at least for today, once this 20-foot-wide road is built, if we want to build something more, we gotta increase the variance. Okay? For the purpose of this discussion. Now, if we already know that, so, it will be a smaller variance request if we know that we already have 2,600 square feet available to us from Mr. Liberty's project. That's why I think it's just, I don't think it's a conveyance. It's just 2,600 square feet of impervious services set aside for the benefit of the easement on Lot 3. That's all.
Okay, I want to make sure that you're okay with the fact that two things are potentially in play at once, because my understanding was that was a concern. That was my takeaway.
What was the other thing?
Well, you have 2,600 feet available, and you have this variance.
I just did not address that. I understand what you're saying. We can build the driveway. No one's disputed it.
I'm not, I'm just talking about-
We just talked about what the plan-
I'm just talking about being crystal clear on a plan, that's all. So, we'll talk about-
The language you want to suggest.
Okay, well, we have one set that we're good with, and we'll consider your second one. Thank you.
I just didn't like the final clause of the way this happened.
Okay, so, I'll ask the board. We've got one set of language that we already agreed on. It works for everyone, and we could go with it. Or, we could ask Ben to craft a second item that is specific to what Mr. Nagel just asked, which is sort of, is the allocating the 2,600 square feet. So, Ben, do you have any issue with that? I'm hesitant. We've already got something that everyone's happy with, and I want to get it done, but if they're all so willing to do this, which gets them a little bit more, and they'd be more happy. So, I'm willing to consider it, but if it makes this thing complicated-
I think, I think from town staff's perspective, there's an active variance. There's been a driveway permit. There's been a driveway permit issued. Those two documents speak on their own. This plan, I think, the two issues that the, that the that the codes office needed to have addressed as part of this revision are both addressed. And so, I, how do I put this? I think whatever everybody is happy with, I think, is the best outcome here because, you know, going in, making unnecessary distinctions, I think, sort of, I don't know, it clouds the whole thing. So, I'm fine, I'm fine with what Attorney Nagel suggested if the applicant is. But I just want to be clear on exactly what it says, and I think I was just trying to do a little back of the
Well, I guess where I was going.
calculations, so.
The math can be in addition to your first sentence. Okay, I mean, I understand the reason for the first sentence. I think if you add the second sentence, it's very clear.
The only thing I'd want the board to be clear with is getting the applicant's position. I mean, I think what Attorney Nagel has used the word "dedicated" to, and I know that that's it's probably not using the exact legal terminology for it, but essentially, the request is- but essentially, the, the request is, is that the plan indicate that, under any circumstances, there will be twenty-six-hundred square feet of impervious.
I understand what he's asking for. So, where I'm at is, we're at a point where everyone is happy. There's a potential revision where they're a little bit happier. And I think the applicant is willing to do that. Are you willing to revise it in that way of allocating the twenty-six-hundred or not?
Yeah, I mean, that's the whole goal, I'm just wondering if it's, if it would be more productive just to say what our impervious area is gonna be outside the easement, and then whatever they do inside the easement's either twenty-six-hundred square feet or more if, you know, pursuant to their ZBA approval.
That's actually what I was thinking, is what if we, what if the applicant just said, you know, on, the, impervious area on this plan will not exceed X.
Or you can say that the impervious area inside the easement shall not exceed the greater of twenty-six-hundred square feet or some higher amount as indicated in the current ZBA approval. And just say it's the greater of the two.
That's where, that's where this all started, and it didn't work.
What, what if?
Twenty-six is enough for a road.
What if either, so, I'm looking, I'm just, I'm just throwing this out there. You see on lot three, I'm just looking at the face of the plan, there's lot three, it's labeled existing commercial building, Grayland Holdings LLC, and it has impervious surface calculations underneath there. Lists area, it lists impervious, impervious area, it lists proposed impervious area. And I'm wondering whether it would make more sense, instead of trying to use words in note thirteen to specify this, that there either be added underneath or within that same block, proposed impervious area of right-of-way twenty-six-hundred. Maybe I'm, I'm more complicated things, but that way we don't have to deal with the terminology of, of the variance and all of that, and instead, it's clearly indicated on the plan, by what I think everybody has agreed, that there will, that the buildings and the parking lots and everything make up sixty-one point one percent, and that twenty-six-hundred square feet and whatever percentage that is, is allocated to the right-of-way. And just show that on the face of the plan, and then would negate note thirteen effectively.
So.
I have always respected your attorney, I think that's for an intent. Could say thirty-point.
So, hang on, do you can't, please don't speak from the audience, because our television audience, which is one, can't hear you. So, I'm fine with that. However, I wanna, we're getting this done tonight, so, we're not, like, coming back next month. This is getting approved tonight, and it's gonna be done, so, if a change involves, like, having to go back, that's a no-go in my book, because we're walking out of here with an approval. Or a condition, so, however we, however we do it. And we're starting to. I like, I mean, it's a good way to do it, but.
Yeah, it's more visual.
Okay, so Kristin has suggested that instead of under, underneath the block lot three, you'll, you'll notice off to the far right of lot three, there's, it's, it's in less bold font, but it says sixty-foot access and utility easement benefiting Chapman and Rayland.
Yes.
What if there, underneath there, it's just added, very similar to what you have under lot three, just proposed impervious area equals twenty-six-hundred square foot plus or minus.
Well, the only issue there is they already have approval for more than that.
I, I understand that, and I know that they, they have approval for more than that, but I guess. I mean, I.
Technically, it could be, I guess they don't, they have approval for a twenty-foot wide driveway.
It's not, yeah. I just wanted to be, just make clear on the face of the plan that, like, like we discussed, I mean, absent the variance, there'd be twenty-six-hundred square feet sort of set aside.
Yeah, that's why I was just saying, if we could say the greater of twenty-six-hundred or the, what's approved in the variance. That way, they, they, they have what's, the higher amount, but if for some reason, they don't get that.
That's fine.
The twenty-six-hundred.
That sounds a lot like my initial idea, which was shall not supersede that variance.
I don't have, I don't have a problem with that, although I am, it's almost come full circle at this point, yeah.
Okay. I'm just trying.
Well, I was pointing, three-point-one percent of the impervious, three-point-nine percent is twenty-seven forty-five feet, not twenty-six-hundred. Just decided to double-check the math. They're saying that this is, I multiplied seventy thousand three ninety-five point three point nine percent, and I got two thousand seven forty-five.
Twenty-six-hundred's not based on that, it's based on the public casement row.
So, I, the twenty-six-hundred number is.
They're offering twenty-six-hundred, so.
Okay.
Are you telling us twenty-six-hundred is all the excess?
Well, no.
I just have problems when people say one thing and it's not true.
Okay, hold on now.
What?
They're offering you twenty-six-hundred square feet. Do you want it, or do you not want it?
They offered us the concept of all the area they didn't use, and Ben decided to put a note on.
Okay, all we're talking about is twenty-six-hundred, that's been the number. Nobody said anything different. Now you're asking for more, based on a different calculation.
I'm not gonna say it about a hundred square feet.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, let's move on. So, you've had plenty of time to draft some revisions over there, hopefully.
Well, I get, the only question, Mr. Chair, is whether we're, whether we're rewriting note thirteen at this point, or whether we're simply adding impervious surface figure to the title.
I'm, I'm fine with either, I wanna do whatever is the most clear and the easiest to do.
I think my preference would be to remove note thirteen and simply put the note for twenty-six-hundred square feet.
Okay, I'm, I'm good with that.
And I think it would be easiest to just do that underneath the notation regarding the sixty-foot access and utility easement. Over to the right.
I'm fine with that, and to the extent they have their ZBA approval, it would just supersede anything on this plan anyway.
It would, yep.
Mr. Chair, would the ZBA variance granted language still stay on the plan?
So, that's, yeah, that's, we've, we, Ben, I think, has a separate.
Okay.
Write-up on that, where we, we struck the first sentence and did some rewriting, so that's, that's separate, so. Okay, so, in concept.
In concept.
Back to the, the ZBA variance granted language, we have that covered, you have a rewrite of it.
Yes, it's a small rewrite, but I will read it verbatim.
Let's read it verbatim, please.
On November twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three, the Town of Gray Zoning Board of Appeals granted approval of a variance to allow for up to six-point-two percent of addition, of additional impervious coverage. This is for a twenty-foot driveway located on lot three, map zero-two-eight, lot twenty-six dash zero-zero-two dash zero-zero-zero, for the benefit of the adjacent land shown as, and then in quotations, N slash F William Chapman hyphen Gregory Rand, closed quote, southeast of the sixty-foot access and utility easement, per the Certificate of Zoning Variants Approval recorded in the Cumberland County Registry of Deeds, Book four-zero-five-two-five, page forty-three. That's it.
Great, thank you. And then, on the topic of note thirteen, we will strike note thirteen.
In its entirety.
In its entirety, and we will replace it with notation on the plan that reads what?
The notation on the plan will be on the far south, southwesterly corner of lot three, it currently points to the area in question, and it says sixty-foot access and utility easement benefiting Chapman and Rand, and then in parentheses, three-seven-two-zero-three slash one-seven-seven. Underneath that, it will say, propose, or P R O P, period, impervious area equals twenty-six-hundred plus or minus square feet.
Okay. Great.
Would you prefer not a plus or minus?
I just don't know what it means.
How about not to exceed?
I thought you asked twenty-six-hundred square feet.
I'm fine with, strike the mention of plus or minus, it can say twenty-six-hundred square feet.
Perfect.
Can you read that again, please?
Sure.
The second sentence. About the twenty-six-hundred.
So, underneath the current notation on the plan that says sixty-foot access and utility easement benefiting Chapman and Rand, thirty-seven-two-zero-three-one-seven-seven.
Oh, that's over here.
Correct, yep. So, similar to what is under note, what, what is under lot three currently, it will now say, in addition to that language, proposed impervious surf, proposed impervious area equals twenty-six-hundred SF.
Thank you, that's wonderful.
Okay, great. So, now we can get to a draft motion. We've got a number of conditions, one through seven. You're good with all those conditions, right? Okay, and then we've got, just thinking how we wanna incorporate this, because it would have been condition, essentially, condition eight is to make the change to the, the ZBA variance granted language, and condition nine is to make the changes to the face of the plan, so we just need to.
I also need to strike note thirteen.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
So maybe that should be condition number eight, is strike thirteen.
So, it is strike note thirteen. Condition nine would be add the, the variance granted language as read by Ben. As, I think you could just say as read into the record.
Okay.
It's fine. And then the third is, changes to the face of the plan regarding the twenty-six-hundred square feet as read into the record by Ben. Sorry, I forgot your last name again.
So, only Ben.
Okay, so we've got one. We have new, new conditions eight, nine, and ten.
Okay.
That's, yeah, thank you, that's a better way to do it. So, you can reference one through seven as stated in the memo, and then read your eight, nine, and ten. It's rock and roll.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I move to approve the request by Scott Libby, DBA, Gray Holdings LLC, represented by J.P. Conley of DM Roma Consulting Engineers, for amendments to the Lewiston Road subdivision plan, Plan Book two-two-two, page two-forty-nine, and site plan regarding the access easement for lots two and three, map twenty-eight, lots twenty-six dash zero-two dash zero-one, and twenty-six dash zero-two dash zero-zero at one storage way and two storage way respectively, and the abutment easement and impervious calculation on lot three. This property is located in a commercial zoning district, and the application is subject to site plan and subdivision amendment review, and subject to the following conditions, one through seven, as reflected in the town's, town planner's memo, and subsequent conditions, condition number eight, to strike note thirteen on the proposed plan. Condition number nine, replace the variance granted language with language as read into the record by the town attorney at this meeting. And condition number ten, changes to the face of the plan to add text into the utility easement area with language as read into the record by town attorney.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Congratulations, you have your amendment. Thanks, everyone, for your input and bringing this to a resolution.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Hopefully, it's congratulations for you as well. All right, that's it.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? All right. I'll close the meeting at, oh, did she not say something? What's that?
Don't forget to sign the plan.
Yeah, yeah, close the meeting at, what is it, eight forty-three?